Welcome to the Cumberland School Committee meeting Thursday, February 22, 2018, at 7:12 PM. I ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I would like to take a moment of silence to reflect on the lives that were lost at the Stonem Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? The ayes have it. I would like to also say for the record that Mr. Demodica is not present in the meeting. And then also that Mr. Tony Demona is sitting in the audience, our Assistant Superintendent, because he's getting over the flu, and we don't want to get sick. Glad you're feeling a little better, Mr. Demona. Next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report, Student Activities. Please come up to the microphone, state your name.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Serena Fox, and I am the President of Student Government.
And I am Hannah Valoo, the Senior Class President.
Welcome.
On the 6th of February, Student Government Representatives volunteered at the blood drive in the trans cafeteria. As a school, we donated enough blood to save 72 lives, and we earned a silver medal for the second highest percentage of donors. The monthly government meeting was held on Tuesday, February 13, in the main cafeteria, where we welcomed a guest speaker from the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society to speak to us about Pennies for Patients. During the meeting, we also held class meetings to discuss spring events and plan for the organization of Pennies for Patients. Last night, parent-teacher conferences were held here at the school, and student government members were stationed throughout the school to guide parents to their students' classrooms.
This year at CHS, the Variety Show will be held in the auditorium on the 2nd and 3rd of March with comedy, music, and dance performances. The week of the 5th through the 9th is Respect Week, which is organized by our school's GSA. Student Government Meeting for March will be held on the 13th at 6:00 PM in the cafeteria. Our official collections for Pennies for Patients will begin on the 5th of March and will continue through the 23rd. Every Friday, Student Government Members will stay after school to count the donations. Our goal is to raise over $10,000. This year, we have designed a new system for the school-wide competition. Teams will be made by teachers' classes, not their advisories. For the first two weeks, each teacher will collect for themselves. In the final week of the competition, each leading collector by department will be entered for the competition for the title of Penny's Champion. The top three teachers will receive a pasta lunch with the students in their classes who donated the most. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes, regular meeting, 2/8/18. Approval of Minutes in the Executive Session, 2/8/2008. Pleasure of the committee. Oh, I'm sorry. What did I say? I apologize. 2018. I took the red in last night from Chicago. Thank you, Mr. Denon. Mr. Denon has a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Report out of Executive Session Meeting. Report out of Executive Session Meeting on 2/22/2018. There was a Report out of Executive Session, there was no votes taken, but there was a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Pleasure of the committee. Thank you, Mr. Denon. Mr. Denon has a motion to seal the executive session minutes. So I have a second. Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Ayes have it. Six to zero. Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you could please join me down at the podium, I'd like to recognize the winners of the District Spelling Bee Competition. It is my pleasure to introduce the winners of the Cumberland Spelling Bee. This is Estella Delmoreau, an eighth grader at North Cumberland Middle School. And I see that Mrs. Coughlin is the proud principal of North Cumberland. And also Audrey Lambert, a fourth grade student at Garvin Elementary School. Correct? Okay. So Estella is the champion, and Audrey is the runner-up. Now, just a couple of things I'd like to say about the competition, because I did have an opportunity to attend. And for those of you that have never attended one of these competitions before, what happens is all of the school winners from each grade level are invited to compete in the District Spelling Bee. So we had representatives from grades four through eight. And I'll be honest, I mean, I would have been eliminated in the first round. I mean, these words were really challenging, and I was really impressed with Estella's... I mean, clearly, she knows how to spell, and she was confident and relaxed. And I was really impressed with this fourth grader, who, with the exception of Estella, could probably outspell anyone else in the audience, to be honest. But I was also impressed with all of the other students who participated in the Spelling Bee, because it can't be that easy to stand up in front of all of those people and, you know, take the risk of spelling words that are really difficult. So let me tell you what the winning word was. And I want you all to spell this to yourself. So the word that Estella got spelled correctly was Supercilious? Supercilious. Okay, go ahead. So Estella, as the winner of the Spelling Bee moves on to the next stage of the competition, which will take place on March 17... Isn't that St. Patrick's Day? March 17 at Lincoln Middle School, so we wish you well. So congratulations to the both of you. Really impressive spelling. I was really impressed with the challenging words that you all were able to spell. So you certainly are exceptional students, and we're really proud of the work that you did on that particular day. And I'm sure the work that you do every day. So congratulations to you. And congratulations. You want to take... We've got pictures. We're good. You want to take the... Let's slide over here a little bit. I should also mention, Mr. Chairman, and members of the school committee and in the audience, that Mrs. Bassignani is here too, the principal of Garvin Elementary School. And Audrey is a student there, so congratulations to you too, Mrs. Bassignani.
Mr. Mitchell, at this time, we're going to take a two-minute break. If anybody needs to grab a drink of water, or do some homework, or anything like that. So thank you again. Excellent job, ladies.
Just a couple of other things that I would like to share with everyone. And I know that, given the recent incident in Florida with the loss of life at that high school, certainly, it is an unsettling event that has touched us all in some way. And I think it's important for everyone to know that, as a school district, and I'm sure every school district in America is looking very closely at the protocols that they have in place around school safety, and how to respond in situations that require us to act quickly and efficiently in order to protect our students and staff. So I think it's important for everyone to know that we have been reviewing our safety procedures. We have met as an administrative team to make sure that we are adhering closely to the policies and procedures that are in place. And we also know that this is a difficult time for students, and parents, and community members. And we are planning to hold a town hall meeting, hopefully the first, the full week, or second week in March, that will give us an opportunity to hear some concerns. And, you know, one of the things that I've been... I've been getting emails from parents with concerns, and understandably so. And I think, and one of the things that is interesting to me, and something I think that we need to pay attention to, not only as a district, but as a country as well, and that is that not only do we need to have procedures in place in the event that something bad happens, we need to be responsive. But I think there needs to be more of a focus on prevention. So I've heard from a number of folks that, you know, we really need to pay attention to students who may be having difficulties in some way, and we need to do everything humanly possible to intervene and try and resolve whatever issues students may be struggling with. So the point is that there should be more of a focus on prevention. I think we need to accept that responsibility here, but I think as a nation, we do as well. And I think the thing that is... And I'm sure you have all observed this. I think the thing that is really interesting to me is how students are mobilizing, and I am really impressed with how articulate they are and precise they are in expressing their position, and not only expressing their feelings, but their recommendations to make... resolve this awful situation that we have in this country. So we'll let everybody know when we're going to be planning this town hall, so those interested in attending can attend. We're going to do it here at the high school. And we also have District Safety Committee. It's chaired by Dr. Masterson. We have a... We're in the process of planning a meeting, and that is a committee that meets at least a quarterly. And that is an opportunity for us to discuss any concerns that come up over the course of the school year, and we'll be having some conversations around some of the things that we need to respond to based on some of the feedback that we have received over this last week or so. So we'll continue that conversation, and it is a conversation that we must keep on the front burner. So that's the school safety update. I also would like to mention that one of the... Certainly, school safety will be one of the issues that I discuss. I'm planning to... I have meetings scheduled with each of the PTOs, so we'll... in March, so I'll be meeting with the PTOs and having conversations about a number of issues that we are addressing in the district, and also discussing some of our goals moving forward. Last but not least, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Tony Demona, the Assistant Superintendent, who has graciously and very effectively been taking on two roles. He has, as you all know, over the last month, been stationed at the high school and providing strong leadership there. And I just, you know, he is an impressive leader, and I just want to publicly acknowledge how much I appreciate the fine work that he did in the short time that he was there. And I know without question that he earned the respect of everyone associated with that high school. So thank you, Mr. Demona, for the fine work that you did over the last month, and did a great job. So thank you very much.
I agree, Superintendent Mitchell. I went to go visit him, and I had to wait 45 minutes because he was yelling at someone. I'm just kidding. He was in a meeting, and he was taking care of business. But it was nice to see him active with high school principal duties and also working on system superintendent material as well. So thank you, Mr. Demona. All right, Mr. Mitchell, we're good on the Superintendent update?
Also, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do have one quick question on the B item, the school safety update. If there's... Without saying too much, because I know we do have, you know, an open campus, so there will be time allotments for students to get to classrooms if they have to divert a certain way.
Certainly, that is one of our...
I'm understanding that's a concern.
That is something that we have heard about, and something that... I know that the high school administration has been spending a lot of time on that particular concern, and we know that that is an issue that has to be addressed in some way. So some tentative plans are already in place, and we're going to continue conversations around what we can do regarding that open campus.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Denon.
Mr. Mitchell, I have one comment about the school safety update that you gave. At North Cumberland recently, they did the Start with Hello program from the Sandy Hook Promise, and I think it's a great thing. And you mentioned prevention, and this goes towards that. I think, well, whatever I can do to help, and I probably speak for all of us, but I think encouraging that in all the schools, and then expanding it, is something that we should look into. And I'd just love to see us do more. I think it's a great program, and I applaud the people who brought it in.
That's a great point, and one of the things that we're focusing a lot of attention on mindfulness and social-emotional learning, and how to deal with stress, and, you know, sadness, and all of those things. And I think the motto this year at Cumberland Hill is kindness is the new cool, right? They have T-shirts that say kindness is the new cool. So that is pretty cool.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, Mr. Demona, is your staff happy to have you back full-time? I'll call Mrs. Rue later. We'll check on that. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, Chairperson's Report. Discussion of 2016, 2017 Audit Report. This is also listed later on. The auditor, Mr. Praggnano, correct, could not make it tonight. He's on vacation. On March 8, and we will address any concerns or just the general report in open session. I recall him from last year as well, so... Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Fiscal 2018 Budget Update. The only thing I have to say on that is that there is a joint meeting with the Town Council on Monday, the 26th. Mr. Denon? I believe. Here it is, right here. I apologize, it's not at... I'm just trying to get the time. I apologize. Here we go, 6:00 PM. Yep, at the Cumberland Town Hall, Everett-Mo, Bonner Jr., Council Chambers, 45 Broad Street. So we're looking forward to the public attending and listening to the joint meeting between the school committee and the town council with the mayor. So always welcome. That's all I have to say. Next item on the agenda is Reports of Standing Committees' Payment of Bills. Mr. Hess, I believe you're filling in.
I am, and we did not have any bills to pay this week.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update. Mr. Hess.
Okay, so fiscal met upstairs. We had several discussions. We heard from Sedexo on the food services accounts. Things are running well there. Budget looks good. One thing they did make a note of is that negative balances are increased this year over last year, so that's something we're keeping an eye on. They've noticed an increase in the amount of snacks that are being charged. So that's something we're keeping an eye on, but other than that, their costs are staying within projections. And then we had some discussions about different facilities projects that we might be looking at, and what we might do with some projected savings based on lower charter and transportation costs. And then we have three resolutions that we'll discuss later.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Next item on the agenda, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorillo.
Policy and procedures did meet on Tuesday night. We discussed two items, one being B2, the Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards, which is essentially the guiding principles for the school committee. We've been discussing a stipend increase for the next school committee. We've been discussing it, quite honestly, for the last couple of years. We seem to be getting closer, but we're... I'm going to make a motion later in this meeting to table that. Also, we discussed I2, the Computer Internet Electronic Device Acceptable Use Policy. A few years ago, when a lot of the policies were being redone, cell phones were left out of the policy. I don't know what happened back then, but we are attempting to put a cellphone policy back into our policy book. It is going to be modeled after a very successful program down in Seymour, Connecticut, which seems to be working very well in that high school, and also that same basic policy is being used in other towns here in Rhode Island. And we will be implementing it at some point. We just need to fine-tune it. There are some questions regarding some of the possible punishments that we would be instituting. A lot of this is specifically to combat bullying, among other important issues. But we'll discuss that a little bit later also.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. Next item on the agenda, Achievement and Communications Subcommittee Update. Mr. Denon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Achievement and Communications Subcommittee met earlier this week on Tuesday night, and we had two items on the agenda. The first one was a discussion about the communication strategy for the district, where we talked about primarily a calendar of communications. This is something that we talked about months ago, and we're just getting back to it, where just so we know the regular announcements and other kinds of communications that are sent to parents and students on a calendar, so we know what to expect and when. The second item was the 2018-2019 school calendar, which is going to come up later on the agenda tonight. We just talked about... Actually, we'll probably hear many of the same things tonight, but basically, you know, when the vacations are, when the days off will be. We didn't vote on either of these two items, so we had no votes. And that's it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Comments from the Public. Anything to say? Please step up to the podium. Come on up, my friend. Yep, you can spin that right around, just state your name. Welcome.
My name is Mark Chico. I'm currently a parent in the school district. One of the things I... You know, you guys talked about committees within yourselves. Has there been any thought of school safety committees being combined with people from the outside that might bring a different outlook of what... Different outlook on school safety and everything else? I mean, we can all sit here every day among each other and discuss school safety. I understand the police department is involved with school safety and everything else, but there are people in the public that also have expertise in different outlooks on school safety, and what we can do, you know, as parents, as school committees, as superintendent, to improve school safety all around. Has there been any thought of that? I mean, we can go to a PTO session. I applaud you for that, but as we all know, we... What comes out of it, a lot of times, is more arguing than anything else.
So, thank you. It's an excellent question, and the typical format for this is typically somebody comes up, just state your mind. We don't necessarily respond. But with no due disrespect, I encourage you to reach out to the superintendent's office. He's... I'm sure... I can't speak for the superintendent, but I'm sure he's more than willing to sit down with you, address any concerns, and possibly maybe even former in outside committee, or maybe with a school committee member within your district. Reach out to them as well. So I encourage it. We do like community involvement and input, so I think that'd be great. Mr. Fiorillo.
I'm on the School Safety Committee, along with Mr. Demodica, and I'd be happy to sit down and talk to you, if you'd like, anytime. So if you want, my information's on the school website, the town website, Mark Fiorillo. So contact me anytime. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments from the public? Next item on the agenda, Public Hearing. Reading of Amended Policies. Mr. Fiorillo. B2 Code, Basic Management Principles, Ethical School Standards? Okay? Next item on the agenda, Old Business. Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Resolution. SCPR2-2018-02, Purchase of Groundskeeping Equipment. Pleasure of the committee.
All right, so just some explanation there. This is... This passed upstairs in fiscal. This is a motion to purchase one Kubota tractor from Norfolk Power Equipment of Renton, Massachusetts, in the amount of $38,237.38. This will be used at the high school to help clear sidewalks of snow and keep the parking lots and sidewalks clear at the high school. And again, this passed 2 to 0 upstairs. I would move passage.
Mr. Hess is making a motion to approve passage of SCPR2-2018-02. Do I have a second?
So this is an amended from the original. Originally, we had gotten a quote for two. We've chosen to only purchase one. So Mr. Fiorillo, second for discussion. Mrs. Goggan.
I just... I did have a couple of questions about it. I don't know if you got... Just about the... You know, we talked about it's to clear sidewalks. I just want to make it clear that it is just to clear the sidewalks in front of the school, not for walkers, because the main complaints we get around snowstorms are from parents of walkers who are walking down Mendon Road, and this is not going to help them. Is that correct?
Correct. This is just to clear the area in front of the school that we currently use either manpower or smaller equipment. So this is to enable the groundskeeping and custodial staff to do this quicker than we're doing it right now.
Mr. Fiorillo.
It would also help with, like, the issue of the last snowstorm. The plows would come back through and push all the snow back onto the sidewalks, and we'd have to wait for this town to come out. This equipment would be able to re-clear those sidewalks, so the students from the parking lots and, you know, anybody else that's walking nearby could potentially be helped.
I'm just asking this question to put it out there. Ultimately, it is the town's responsibility to clear those spots, right? Where we're kind of picking up where they can't always do it in a timely manner? Is that fair?
I would be happy to answer that. Yeah, this is because, quite honestly, that the town is... Does not make sidewalks, I would say, the priority that it needs to be. And that is no reflection on the Department of Public Works, the Highway Department, Frankie Stoick. This is about a lack of manpower and a lack of equipment, that the town has never made the full commitment to fully staff and equip our highway department to actually handle a town of this size and the needs that we have, and the complete lack of respect that we give sidewalks in this town.
Mr. Denon?
Can you clarify? Is this to... Where are these going to be used? On Mendon Road or own sidewalks within the school? I guess that's...
It's my understanding that, as we all know, being members of the school committee, the sheer volume of snow removal at the high school is challenging to stay on top of.
So the thinking is that the Kubota would be able to take on the snow removal for, you know, most of the high school area, the sidewalks, the parking lots, and what have you. And it's true that, I mean, it's not, it's not reasonable for us to, to clear sidewalks beyond, you know, what is the sidewalks that our students walk on or on the campus and crossing the parking lot and crossing Mendon Road to get to the school. So clearly, that is, that is our, our main focus, clearing snow from this campus. But I also would like to point out that in addition to removing snow or in snow removal season, it also can be used to cut grass. And one of the issues that we have been dealing with over the last couple of years is moving sand at the end of the season because of, you know, sand that's been, been put down to help us navigate through snow-covered parking lots and what have you. So it will provide an opportunity for us to do a number of things beyond just snow removal.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Any further questions? Mr. Denon.
Yeah, so I, just to go back to Mrs. Goggins' question, so this isn't really replacing what the town would do at all. It's our own stuff, right? I, I think there was a, I think the answer was different. Yeah.
Okay, my answer was different than?
No, I just, I, I think there was a misunderstanding.
My question was, are we getting this to do something that the, the town is responsible for doing, but just doesn't get done in a timely enough manner for us, for our students? I was just trying to figure out what.
I don't, I don't know that, that that's the case, but let me just share what I think is a reasonable scenario. I don't recall which snowstorm it was during this winter, but you recall the snow? We knew, we knew days in advance that this massive storm was coming, so we were prepared for it. But because there was so much snow, and because in order to, you know, the, the plows keep the streets clear, for Mendon Road, for example, that snow gets pushed onto the sidewalks. Well, it was virtually impossible for the highway department to clear all of the snow, the sheer volume of snow that had fallen. So I think a good example, I mean, having a Kubota would at the very least help, you know, to clear the sidewalks in front of the parking lot and on this side of Mendon Road where students walk. I mean, it, it is not taking on the responsibility of what the town, you know, is required to do. I don't know that the town has the capacity to take care of, you know, the volume of snow that fell in a, in the storm like we had this, this winter. So it will help.
We've also had issues in the past when we've had a lot of snow where we've had to ask the town to come out and kind of bail out the high school because of the sheer volume of it. And this, I would think, Alex, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think this would remove the need to rely on the highway department to come and like, help us out in the heavy snowstorms. Yeah. In the past, we've had to have the town come in and bring in dump trucks and all that kind of stuff, but this should help that problem too. Plus, not to mention all of the landscaping that it's going to be able to do, including the more of this, I don't want to say the hilly areas, but it'll be able to do the hill areas. It'll give us a lot more flexibility in landscaping.
So I may have missed what, I think it was Mr. Hess. So where's the money coming from? It says facilities budget. Is it already in the facilities budget, or does it require a budget amendment?
Mr. Prignato, you want to step up to the microphone?
Okay. I, I guess, you know, my thought is like, we have a vendor for clearing, for clearing the parking lots, and I just wonder, is sidewalk not part of what they do, and that's why we need this equipment? Or, or could we just tell the vendor, we need you to clear the sidewalks too? And then in addition, I think we've talked about working with the town to collaborate on, on facilities, and this seems like a logical one. It's, it's, it's less the money, it's more the plan. That's all, so. That makes sense.
And, and I think that the bigger issue, just from my perspective, and I might be off base here, but I think the bigger issue is capacity, right? Does the town have the capacity to do what needs to be done when you have a massive snowstorm like we had earlier in the season? Your point is well taken. I just want to.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna echo what Mr. Mitchell had said, is that I don't think the town has the capability. Plus, I mean, hopefully, this would be able to remove the need to, would we still have a, a vendor up at the high school to clear the parking lots? Or just more of a minimal effort? Yeah.
And do we have someone who will drive it, and, and do they need training, or? Alex is going to do it? Okay. Thank you.
Right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, new business, review of town audit. Like we had mentioned earlier, the gentleman is on vacation. He'll be attending the March 8th school committee meeting, which we can address any questions, concerns to that. Next item on the agenda, vote on teacher dismissal recommendations. We'll take these one at a time. So we pleasure the committee for a dismissal of teacher A. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the administration's recommendation for teacher A.
Then it makes a motion to accept the administration's recommendation for the dismissal of teacher A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Friedman, I'm sorry, Mrs. Goggins. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Next item is the vote for teacher dismissal for teacher B. Pleasure of the committee. For a motion. Thank you, Mrs. Friedman. Mrs. Friedman has a motion on the floor to accept the superintendent's recommendation for the dismissal of teacher B. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote on 2018-2019 school calendar. Mr. Mitchell, did you want to provide any input on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let the committee know that in, in preparing the, the calendar, which needs to be approved by you, and then goes to the Rhode Island Department of Ed, consultation takes place with district leadership. We also, I think by contractor, are required to consult with the union. By all accounts, the, the calendar that we developed last year has been working very well. And just to remind everyone, our goal was to provide more professional development days over the course of the school year, so that we would be using fewer instructional time to pull staff to do professional development. And by all accounts, this appears to be working really well. So it is, this calendar is consistent, the one that we're proposing for 1819 is consistent with the calendar that we developed for this school year, with just a few minor changes on the professional development days. Everything else is consistent with this year's calendar.
Mitchell, so pleasure of the committee. A motion. Mr. Denon.
Um, one of, so we talked about this in the achievement and communications subcommittee, and since then, I had a question about the, the days, the professional development days and the election days. So if, if, when everyone at home looks at the calendar, they're going to see that we have two election days, which are, where we have to have off because we have voting in the schools. Is there any possibility of coupling the professional development days with the election days, so we can reduce the number of days out? Or is that not possible? Does that question make sense?
Oh, no, the, the question makes sense. The professional development, I, I know that the argument used in the past, and this may not be a strong argument, but we're still talking about facilities being used to do the professional development, which are being used as voting sites. So I know that that has been an issue, and, you know, I, I mean, I, I, I know that there is more rationale for why it's, we're not using those days. Mrs. Fogel, do you, do you, do you know, sorry to put you on the spot, I apologize. But can you think of any other reason why we couldn't use election days to, as professional development days? I, you know what, I apologize for not having a more concrete answer, but I know that that has been discussed before.
It has, yes.
It has, yes.
When people are coming in to vote, the teachers are also coming for PD, then there may not be access for people to vote. So I think that's why the schools are shut down, so that people have access to vote. I don't know of any law that says that when it's a polling place, we need to shut down completely. We can look into that, see if it's a possibility, but I think that that's the reason why it's been done in the past, is because of capacity, because of the way that PD works, they often use rooms and things like that. And so the, the ability to access the building may be a little different.
You know, I only vote at the place I vote at, but like, when, when people vote at the high school, where do they vote? Do they vote in this?
I don't know. This isn't my polling place.
In the cafeteria, right? So are you saying that you would use the cafeteria for professional development?
They often do use the cafeteria.
Yeah.
We can look into it to see if that, if that's something, if there's no restrictions, but I think that it was a parking slash.
Yeah, I, I get it. Yeah, I, I guess, since there's a question and there are two days on the schedule, I would make a motion to table this for now and come back in two weeks if we can do the research. I, I'm not, I, I understand that it's hard to put together a schedule, and, but if we could save those two days, I think parents would be happy.
Mr. Denon has a motion to table the 2018-2019 school calendar with a second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Mr. Mitchell, we'll get this back on the agenda for the next go-around. The question's answered. Thank you.
I have a question. I only, I only know last year's calendar discussion, and it was probably by far the most emails I received from parents than any other topic. Yes, so i- in the past, and those were posted in the past, is that typical, or was that just last year? And should this be posted before we vote on it?
Yes, I guess we can post it. There's no reason not to. So what's, we've got two weeks. We'll figure it out and get it posted. Thank you. Exactly. Next item on the agenda, apologize, discussion and/or vote on forming the school IT audit committee. This is going to be the appointment of three school committee members chaired by Mr. Hess, and other members will be Mrs. Goggins and Mr. Denon. The primary purpose of this audit committee is to provide an oversight of our internal IT process in the system of internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. This committee will meet, and it will advise back to the full school committee by the end of the school year. Mr. Denon.
Yeah, I, I'm all for IT audits. I, I think it's a good idea. This is the first I've learned that I'm on this committee.
Apologize, Mr. Denon.
And, and I don't appreciate that, actually.
Okay, no problem.
I, I think that.
Well, let's, let's, let's table, and we can have a little bit better discussion.
Personally, I, I don't know if I have enough time to devote to it. That's, that's one of my issues. What do we think, actually, who else is on this committee in addition to the three school committee members?
This committee will only be the three school committee members.
And will meet?
And they will, they will work with the internal, they will work with the administration. They will meet at their leisure whenever they want to.
Yeah, it'd have to be an open meeting.
It could be an open meeting, like a policy or an achievement.
Okay, so we're basically forming a new subcommittee for IT audit. And I know that that's at the pleasure of the chair, so I'm not, I'm not arguing with the.
It's fine, no, understood.
I, I think we need, well, I, I guess we, what are the goals, and you know what I mean? What is, what is the reason this is getting to?
So let's do this. Let's, let's table this, and then we can have a little bit more discussion.
I make a motion to table.
Thank you. Mr. Denon makes a motion to table. Second, second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve amended policies. Mr. Fiorillo.
The first one is B2, the code of basic management principles and ethical school standards, as I discussed earlier. This is about increasing the stipend for the school committee. The stipend has not been increased in at least 12 years. We've, the actual year that it was done is still up in the air a little bit. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been going through all the data from all the different districts in the state and what different districts provide for stipends. I know the town council has been discussing it since the fall, actually. They have, they want to tie theirs to the mayor's salary. I think it's just, I personally would prefer just a bump in it, which would probably last another 12, 15 years. But there's some other considerations that we've had, so I would like to, I would make a motion to table this for two weeks.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to table.
Second for discussion?
Second.
Can we discuss a table? I think we can. I went through and I looked at the number of meetings we had last year. There were 20 regular meetings, 13 special meetings, 28 executive sessions, 25 fiscal, 14 achievement, 12 policy. So 112 meetings total. If you do the math, it's two, let's say it's two hours for a regular meeting and an hour for every other meeting, it's 132 hours. That was very eye-opening to me, because that, meetings are not even half of, of our time. So I applaud you, Mr. Fiorillo, for doing this. I, I worry about the timing of this. The town council has put off their, their vote, and so that's one of my concerns that we can, we can talk about later. Sure, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to answer, only because, quite honestly, the town council is talking about a much larger investment. They want to tie it to the mayor's salary, which we know is going to go up over the next few years. I, to me, that starts almost sounding more like a salary, whereas this is really just a flat-out stipend. And I think what we're, my, my, my suggestion has been that each member receives 3,200. Right now, we're making 2,200. And then there'd be a bump for the chair. We've discussed the bump for the clerk, because the clerk has a lot of duties that takes up a lot of time. Other committees actually provide for the vice chair, but I think it makes more sense for the clerk to get the bump. We've also discussed possible increase in stipend for the three people that head the three main subcommittees, because there's a lot of work that goes into that as well. So I, I'd like to look at some more information. I'm also meeting with the state school committee board on Monday, which I will not be able to be at the town budget meeting. And I'm going to talk to some of the other members there and see what, what discussions are happening in other districts right now. But I will come back in two weeks with a firm proposal that we can either vote up or down. And I don't think there's any good time to do this.
After the next election.
That is per the, per the charter.
Never sitting in these seats then.
And this is a great time, because right before budget season, none of us really want to be here for another year, so.
So, Mr. Fiorillo has a motion to table, second by Mr. Denon. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Fiorillo.
I2, computer internet electronic device acceptable use policy. I touched upon this earlier. We don't have a policy that actually covers the entire district for cellphone use. That's what we're going to be injecting into I2. We are going to have more discussion. We had a great. have more discussion. We had a great discussion, actually, the other night. We had building administrators from various buildings. We had our usual representative from the teachers. The only thing really, quite honestly, missing were the students. I had a brief conversation with the two ladies that were here earlier, and we are going to bring them into the fold to get the feelings of the student body. But this is something that's definitely going to happen in some form. There are some questions, like I said before, about, you know, social suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, in-school suspensions, detentions. But we're going to clean that all up. We're going to have a cohesive policy. There will be differences between the different buildings, as far as elementary, middle, and high school, just as we have with other suspension policies, because there are differences between the grade levels. But we will come back in two weeks with a fully fleshed-out policy that we will be able to vote on. And then it will take effect within a reasonable amount of time after that.
Mr. Fiorillo, are you making a motion? Thank you.
Second for discussion. Mr. Fiorillo, can we make sure that, I, I thought that the meeting the other night, where the administrators came in and told us about the problems that they're seeing with the current policy, and basically cellphones in general, was eye-opening?
And smartwatches.
And smartwatches. But I guess, their reasons for, for wanting to make changes were sound and important for people to hear. So can we have them come and present that at the full meeting?
Yes, they will actually, one or both of the deans will come. They'll, they have a slideshow that we saw, and they will give us their full presentation, and they'll discuss the discussions they had with administration over at Seymour High School.
Because I, I've seen a lot of, I, I've heard from some parents, and I've seen a lot of discussion about where people, I, I'm not sure they're seeing the full picture of the impact of cellphones, cellphone use. And, you know, if, if my son has a cellphone and doesn't use it, well, that's fine. For, like, but so many students are using it, that it is disruptive. And it, this is a nationwide problem. It's not Cumberland only. But I think the deans and the other administrators had a really unique perspective on it. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about it, actually, because I, I think for us, we, we sit in, in meetings and stuff. We don't sit in the classroom. So we don't, we don't have the full experience. And, so thank you. I'm saying the same thing over and over again.
And I did have a meeting a few weeks ago with high school administration, with Mr. Damana, the deans, and the vice principals, where we discussed a lot of these. Also, it's important to note that, just like in the olden days, we have working phones at the, in the offices. So parents can get in touch with their kids if they need to. Students can get in touch with their parents. And if they need to do something with their cellphone, make a call, or whatever, they can go to the office. And, you know, inside the office, they would probably, they would be able to use their cellphone to call their job and see if they're working that day, or something like that. So, we will take all things into consideration.
And while we're on the topic, one of the things that came up at the subcommittee meeting was using a phone in a crisis. And we, we talked about this quite a bit. And I think it was Mr. Carpenter who said, if you had to get out of the building and you broke a window during a crisis, we're not going to hold that against you. It's similar with cellphones. If, if there's a crisis and you need to use the cellphone, well, we're not going to pull out the policy and say, I, I assume, we're not going to pull out that policy. I also think we should clarify the backpack policy. It, it came up at our meeting that it was something in the future. And on Facebook, it's turned into, we're changing the backpack policy. There's nothing on the table that I know of right now to do that. I think we need to clarify that with students this week. I, I, I'm worried that they're supposed to have an assembly on Friday, and I imagine they won't have that now, because we won't have these new rules. But we need to clarify that we're not changing that policy.
And, I mean, they could still ha- I don't know if they're intending on having the assembly on Friday, because the restrictions on cellphone use are laid out in the handbook. This is really just reinforcing a lot of that. Also, I think it's important to note, there's been a lot of talk about lockers. There's a locker for every student in the high school.
We have a motion to table. We have a second by Mr. Denon. All in favor? Eyes, six, zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions. SC dash R two thousand eighteen dash O one. Mr. Hess?
Uh, that was tabled upstairs? Uh, yeah, so a motion to table?
Mr. Hess makes a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Denon, Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Hess?
Okay. My apologies. So, SCPR two, two thousand eighteen dash zero four. This is to replace the lighting in the CHS Wellness Center with LED lighting. This will be installed by Northeast Electrical Distribution of Providence, Rhode Island, in an amount not to ex... Yes. To purchase... I'm sorry. Uh, yes, we'll be purchasing the lights from Northeast Electrical Distribution of Providence, Rhode Island. This is why I don't do this frequently. Purchased, installed by our electricians, purchase amount not to exceed seven thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
Mr. Hess, this passed upstairs?
Yes, this passed two to zero upstairs, and I would move passage here as well.
Hess, Mr. Hess recommends passage of SCPR two, two thousand eighteen dash O four. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Friedman. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero.
I'm trying to think of what the opportunities are.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Fogel, welcome.
Only one for you this evening. So I request the, it's an appointment, I'm sorry. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of Sergio DiCosta, Content Area Leader for World Language at Cumberland High School, effective February twelfth, twenty eighteen. Mr. DiCosta is a current world language teacher. He teaches Spanish. He would be filling in for the vacated position that Heather Dofino had when she went to go be the teaching and learning coach. He, so he's already paid. He's a Step Ten. This gives him a prorated stipend of three thousand dollars for doing that work.
Mrs. Fogel. Pleasure of the committee for a vote on the appointment of the one teacher. For Mrs. Fogel, do I have a motion? Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Goggins, Mrs. Friedman. I'd like anyone, both of you, make the same motion. All in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you, Mrs. Fogel.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Pleasure of the committee. Anyone?
I may. Hess? I'd just like to remark on, on some of the back and forth that's happened between the school department, the school committee, and, and the mayor's office over the past couple of weeks. For me, it's kind of unfortunate that the mayor has chosen to engage his questions and concerns in that manner. I can recall a number of occasions attending town council meetings where the mayor accused certain town council members of throwing rocks at him. And that, I think, is the best description I can come up with for his approach. The media services poses a great service to the community, but I don't think it's the way for the different areas of the town to communicate. I realize it's an election year, and certainly this plays well if you're running for reelection as mayor. But I don't think it's a good way to run a town. If the mayor has questions and concerns about our budget, I really wish he'd bring them up with us, rather than bringing them up in the newspaper, so that we can address them. And I just don't appreciate the tenor and the tone of the approach that he's taken. I certainly hope that doesn't portend the nature of the discussions that we'll be having on Monday, because if it does, I'm not sure that that's going to be a particularly productive meeting. But hope springs eternal, so perhaps after a weekend of thoughtful reflection, we can actually have some productive conversations about how to move both the school department, the district, and the town forward in a respectful and congenial manner. Thank you.
Very well said, Mr. Hess. Thank you. Anyone else? Denon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, thank you, Mr. Hess. You've summed it up well. I, I would reiterate that if anyone on the town council, or the mayor, or anyone in the public has any concerns about our budget, they should contact one of us, or the superintendent. We, our doors are open, so to speak, and we, we welcome feedback. I think, again, I'm speaking for everybody. I, I, and generally, we wel- welcome feedback. I think it was unfortunate what happened. And, you know, I, I try to think of it as like a teaching moment, too, for, for people, and for all of us. Like, the mayor made accusations against us and called our integrity into question. That's not something that you can easily recover from, number one. And how, how do we defend it? I liked what Mr. Mitchell said, not this week, but last week, that like, no one on the school committee asked to hide money. And, asked anyone to hide any money. And if you, if you know the whole story, you look at the audit, well, there's the money. It's right there in the audit. I, I feel like as a school committee member, I can't be an expert in all things. And we hire experts. So we have a business manager. Business manager is the expert. And then, on top of that, we do audits to, to make sure that everything is fine. And, and I was at that meeting where the audit was presented to the town council, and the auditor did not even mention this issue. It's really unfortunate that, that the accusation was made, even, even though, and I'm going by a lot of what I read in the breeze, it was made via private email. It could somehow leak to the breeze, and now the whole town thinks that I am hiding money, or any one of us, right, as a committee. And that stinks. And it's just not true. And I'm not sure how we recover from that. It's, we, we try to do the best we can. And we, we, we know we have supporters out there, people who, who, who understand the, the job we have. But the, there are other people out there who are, who are constantly looking for things like this. And this just gives them ammo that, that is unwarranted. And I, I, I told the mayor that, too, that I didn't think it was right. Thank you. That's it.
I think it's important to note that we don't pay for our audit to be done, or we, you know, we don't hire our own audit company. Our audit is done by the town's auditor. So it is completely a separate entity from us. So if there were any issues, I'm sure the auditor would have brought it up instead of the way it was done. So, which I have no respect for.
Anyone else? Next item on the agenda, we're going to head upstairs to go into executive session, and then we'll be back down to adjourn a little bit later. Correct? With the door open, yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.